Okay, this meeting is now called to order. First, we have a public hearing. It is a proposed disposition of real property in the county of Lee, Virginia. The Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 15, 2020, at 4:30 PM in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse at Johnsville, Virginia. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment on proposed disposition of the following property. Tax parcel 21-A-132 contains approximately 5.8 acres and fronting on State Route 864, Bus Route Road near Johnsville. Access for handicapped individuals is available. If you need special assistance or have questions regarding access or for further information regarding the proposed disposition of these properties, please contact Dane Poe, County Administrator, 276-346-7714.
Mr. Chairman, I just make note that that tax parcel number is incorrect. The description of the property is correct and the location. That tax parcel number was, should be, 53-A-75. I did a cut and paste from the old ad on the other properties and did a correct that section.
Okay, first, anybody here that sits here just before that? Did you get that correction? Okay, is there anybody here for this proposed disposition of real property? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on. Next, we got Department of Labor reports. Got the Treasurers' report. Is Nathan coming on up to do his?
Come back here, leave.
Oh, I didn't see. I looked back there and I didn't see. Yeah. Sorry about that, Nathan.
Chairman, Board. Mr. Poe sent out a survey for the Uthcun courthouse security, which includes metal detector, officer shaking down. And I've got it typed out. I figured I could say more than five minutes. I've typed 12 pages. I gotta take this thing out. I was in security for over 20 years to include the highest security position in Department of Corrections. I had been on numerous security assessments, which included front entry security. These assessments include how the entry was set up and the process that was used on individuals before they were allowed to enter the facility. Listing below are some of the more important reasons as to why I feel the door at the double staircase would be safer for security staff. Easier on individuals entering and exiting the building and overall secured movement in the courthouse. If you've got any questions as I go, just feel free to ask. The option of using the double doors would have your security personnel too close to the entryway. The officer would not have a chance if someone entered with a weapon. It is approximately eight feet from the door to the wall, very little visibility. You can have them stationed well over 40 foot away with a clear line of sight from another location. More exits can be viewed all at the same time from another location. Three versus one with a clear view of anyone that tries to enter at the fourth entry at the double doors. More room for individuals to enter an exit without clogging up the entryway. The courthouse gets very busy two times a year. Fall during tax season in my office and in the spring during tax returns in the Commissioner of Revenue's office, which are both located mere feet from that particular entryway. Having individuals walk around security staff to exit the building in such confined areas is very unsafe for the officer. Regardless how it is set up at the double doors, individuals would be only a couple feet away from each other at best. Accessibility to the handicap. It seems to me that it would be much easier for someone to enter through one door than through a double door if they had limited mobility. Employees entering the courthouse even through the side door can be seen, scanned, and temperature checked before going to their offices. This would include all floors that entered the courthouse except for the controlled entry downstairs at the Sheriff's Park. And Chris Jones couldn't make it this evening, but he signed at the bottom of it to be in agreement with this plan. Do y'all have any questions concerning the plan?
Would you think you could fit more people in the building and get them out of the weather?
Yes, because the front entry has the canopy over top automatically. Plus pulling it back 45. I said 40 feet, that's being very lenient. You can pull it back 50, 60 feet if you need to. And have it marked off and you could fit all those people in the courthouse while you're getting through the metal detector. Because most people's gonna sit off the metal detector. If they've got one of them in their pocket, it's gonna sit off the metal detector. So you gotta have a table set up. They gotta enter their pockets, they go back through the metal detector. And like I said, you're looking at 50, 60 feet versus eight feet.
Where would you be talking about the metal detector would actually be sitting at now?
At the old entryway that everybody used at the big staircase. Breaking it in half and putting it toward the back, almost to where the staff entry would be. That way you'd be looking at all three exits and have a clear line of sight at that door. Plus, if people went to leave, they wouldn't have to come back around as a security officer. They would just come out and go out the exit door.
But you're saying that it would be set up past those first set of doors?
Yes, yes. It'd be probably pulled back to almost where you can see out the side. Well, the constitutional officer's part of that doorway there, you could pull it back that far. It's probably actually 50, 55 feet. It's over 40 feet to that corner.
So could that officer also help flex the judging? And usually there's an officer, I think, that stands there and waits for the judge?
Yeah, they could see him and hold it up, lock him in, whatever needed to be done. So that's the problem with the other door. You're only looking at what comes in that doorway. At the staircases, you're looking at three exits. Plus, you're looking through a glass door if anybody was to walk by. And the close proximity, I know it's set up in case somebody brought in a weapon into the courthouse. The officer has a lot better chance from 40, 50 feet looking straight out than he does from eight feet.
But on the other side, the metal detector's set up right at the door, though, right?
No, I'd set it up back there at the table where the officer would. So it's like I said, you're clear.
Were they taking the detector?
No, no, they're not.
No, I'm talking about on the other option. It would be set up right at the door versus what you're talking about in the back?
I don't know exactly what's planned for that.
During the Sheriff's Committee, the letter, uh, an estimate to be distributed to the Board tonight. And I, there is a sketch there of how the entry would be set up. It's shown where the metal detector would be. It would be between the two doors in that best view. If you want to go ahead and paste that across. She just asked if that, that we can have that fixed tonight.
Do y'all have any more questions pertaining to that? Looks like you got a pretty good bunch here. I'm trying to take everybody down. If you don't have any more questions on that, also on the back of your packet. I come up with a report when I got into Treasurers' office. I tried to come up with something I thought would be beneficial for you all since I did set in your chairs at one point in time. There's one that shows what's been collected on taxes and what it was collected from. And there's another form that shows the uncollected real estate and the uncollected personal property. So you know exactly what's out there. I plan on trying to update those quarterly. I ain't saying I come up here and present them, but I will get them to Dane for us to bring up in the evenings. That way y'all have a good idea of the collection rates, what's left. And anytime you have any questions pertaining to any of that, you know, you can come.
Anybody got any questions for Nate?
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, Nathan. Okay. Next on the list, we have, uh... Next on the list, we have, uh, public expression. And, uh... If you will, when you come forward, uh, if you state your name and your address and you have three minutes to state your business.
It's all right, I'll take my mask off.
It is. It'd probably be better if it's hard to hear you.
Thank you. My name's Brian Sage. Address is 272 Sage Mountain Road, Duff Field. I live over in Stickleville. I'm here to speak on, not one behalf of them myself, but I will tell you that I know there's a lot of people who have very deep concerns like I do about what I'd like to ask you about. I'll come right to the point. Specifically, the federal coronavirus relief funds, which have been allocated to the county, as indicated by two different letters that came from the Governor's office. The last one came out on July 28th. The way I read these letters, if I read correctly, I know there's at least $2 million and I think $4 million that has been allocated to the county, depending on how I read that, but I'm sure you all know. I read that there's three overarching guidelines to these funds. They gotta be spent on public health emergency with respect to COVID-19. They can't be used to balance your books. They can't be used for your current budget. And this money has to be spent by December the 30th. That last point is my main concern of why I'm here. I've heard very little to nothing about how the county intends to spend that money. And perhaps you all have a good plan and it's already in place. But it's my understanding that if that money is not spent by December 30th, it goes right back to the federal coffers. And with the shape and position that our county stays in, I think it would be now near a crime to let that happen. So I'd like to know what the plan is and if you have a plan on how that money's spent. Now, I can tell you that the money specifies this to be used for public health emergencies. To my knowledge, um, in talking with some of my counterparts at emergency agencies, I don't think there's been any input that's been asked, suggestions or questions that were asked from any of the emergency agencies in the county. I don't think there's been any discussion with the hospital authority, how they saw that we might or might not use it, and perhaps there has. I'm just asking the question. I can tell you, I know for a fact that this money has been used in neighboring counties where they did ask for input from the emergency agencies and their leaders. It's been used for turnout gear. It's been used for air packs. It's been used for decon facilities, which would consist of showers and dryers that can be used to clean up PPE once it's been used on a COVID cop. It's been used for extractors, which is basically a big industrial washer and dryer so that you can clean the PPE when you come back in. It's been used for ambulances. It's been used for rescue trucks. We got three and a half months to try to nail this down. So I hope you guys will give this serious consideration. And please let us know what the plan is for how this money is going to be used. Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Take that off. Hi, my name's Richard Garrett. I am a president and the captain of the Johnsville Rescue Squad. My address is 489 Ridge U Road, Johnsville, Virginia. And what I'm here for is my concern. You all have put back $60,000, am I correct, for the EMS agencies? We haven't been notified how we can get it, what we can do to get it, or what guidelines that have to be done. But we need to know this. Also, uh, every place in Lee County, we're running on Band-Aids with our ambulances. You know, yesterday, we had, um, several down. We ended up going down because of our truck, so this run on Band-Aids. Uh, then Kioki had to go all the way to the federal prison to pick somebody up, and that left our county without ambulance anywhere. Okay, we're asking for help. You know, we're not wanting no handout. We want help from you all because the citizens of this county needs this. You know, if we have to go to Blackwater to pick up somebody, you know, we gotta go to Sneagle Hospital. Or where we're in the middle, we go to Monson Pine. We go to North, we go to Harlem, we go everywhere. In two months, we have put 12,000 miles on a truck that we had to go and buy because we didn't air it down. Okay, we'd like to have some consideration with that money that you all got to help us out, to help all the agencies out. Because we're all, you know, we're doing day-by-day stuff right now. And, uh, the people in Lee County deserve this. I would hate to think that we get a call and our ambulance goes down and you can't get nobody to you and somebody in your family or in your community passes away because we can't get there. Okay, I really think you really need to consider, you know, $10,000. I, I looked at it and you gave them $60,000. They six of us, that's $10,000 a piece. Our insurance alone is $13,000 a year. You know, and I'm sure the other agencies is like that also. But, and, you know, where we have no hospital, we have to travel a lot, you know, to get to everybody. Because we're pretty much in the middle and we're running 70 to 80 calls a month. And I'm sure the other agencies are too. And, uh, but you could check that through, uh, the dispatcher and everything like that. But when you're running that kind of mileage on a truck, it's got almost 200,000 miles, it ain't gonna work long. You know, like I said, uh, White County bought six ambulances. Scott County bought four or five. I just would like for consideration of that with the $4 million that was, uh, they gave it to you all. So I think my time's up. Thank you all for hearing us.
I'm Stephen James, uh, from Rose Hill. And I represent the Nauman Rescue Squad here, not under the chief, but Thomas Walker. And I put in 47 years of this. And as a matter of history, we, the association, started about five years ago with Nauman and his director working on some issues of this county about our emergency services. And in some ways, we've made some progress. In a lot of ways, we, we've understand the door can shut. And, uh, you know, I think it's a shame really. We had a windfall come in here that nobody expected. And, uh, but you all appropriated for mitigation of coronavirus with first, first people that goes out. If makes contact, has to use a lot of protocol, has to try to protect themselves, their families, and everything for purposes, 2% of the bullets available. Every one of us knows that the hospital has been down for years. These vehicles wore out. They don't have certain, uh, features on them called HEPA filters that is good for the patient, good for the attendants, the driver that tries to pull these agents out to protect them. For volunteers, we gotta go home. It's a sober thing. You know, I'm, I'm reminded of something that Dane made mention of while in Cavilville. You know, we've tried to work through administrative processes, spoke with a lot of them. So down to sheriff about a lot of issues, having to do it live and day. Dane, when Cavilville's trying to be serious about things, he said, I said, what's the solution here? He said it's political. Mr. Poe was on the record as saying there won't be no ambulances out this county. Now, I want that to be quite a bit. Is that your feelings?
I'm a citizen, Nathan.
I want y'all to consider that.
I'm a citizen, Nathan.
I have problems anywhere from $85,000 to up to $212,000, which was five, there is five units sitting close by that can be delivered within a matter of a month. For upwards of around 125,000, down to 85,000.
125 equipped?
No.
It's not just a base?
That's, that's base, base model.
What's the full price? That's what I want.
Full price, 125,000 on a remount.
It's equipped?
Decked out?
No.
No.
Equipped, what is it? Okay, you're, if you deck one out, it'll cost more than you.
Yeah, at least $250,000 for a fully.
I don't know what the part of it, if they're putting HEPA filters, it need to be done. I mean, that could be a, I'm quite, the line I'd imagine to be, but, uh, you know, that's one of the features that surely still on these things.
Steve, how many amps you got in the county?
Well, they, they six squads, I'd say somewhere in the 10th, 12th range, something like that. That sound right. Actually, you know, in consideration, uh, Thomas Walker and Kioki is only two agencies. It's got reliable functional ambulances. And, uh, you know, some people don't... My recommendation to be one per agency. And look at taking the best of what is left on the ones that have, some of, some of the agencies need two. And re-De even out, or make them a reserve ambulances because it's inevitable that these things break down. I don't care what's a human or old one, but, uh, you know, I, I'll just mention one call. A few weeks ago, I got a call for a car that said, well, uh, what a bullet broke his, his wrist. It was taken to a miller. When we got through the tunnel, they called us. Got a stroke, heart attack issue below human. I said, need to roll it over. I said, work in a minute, get to the ER. They said, the only ambulance we got available is Kioki. That don't work. And I don't know what the issue was, whether it was broken down on another call or what. So I, I, you know, I had somewhere I was supposed to hit four call. It was getting there. I was having trouble getting back on this. Well, you can't leave somebody laying. And I committed to it. Well, we're gonna, we'll gotta get back in the sickest we can. And that's not a high process to go through the ER.
But it would be highly coincidental for all five of the other agencies to have been out, or the other four have been out on the same call, the same tunnel.
They, 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 they're rolling through four, five agencies before they get answering them.
But that's information that we can readily get, so if there was agencies available.
And, uh... And the family, they opted to, I don't know what the patient outcome was or anything about his patient, but, uh, when we could make contact coming out of the ER, the families opted to go in personally. And that may be overheated, you know, if somebody has a nurse that they're going to have to find them on a person, please hit for a taxi or something.
What's your biggest challenge? Is it that you need more staff? You just need more vehicles? And do you propose that we give the same amount of money to each organization or make it based on cause?
It's a combination of a lot of things. A lot of years ago, there's a lot of people had the EMT license in the county. You had a lot of augereries that supported the finances. People were tired of putting up with dealing with it. And we're getting to a time in this world where people thought other things to do, they it, I mean, your neighbor ain't your neighbor no more. So they've very few people that's actually got the license that they're writing in the back of an ambulance. And then the other part of it is, it's a vehicle problem. They, they're the motor problems, they're the liability problems, there's insurance problems. They, I mean, we, we debated all this stuff and, and, and it's just a hot pot with a big mess. We have all kinds of issues, you know. We've come out in the paper about Thomas Walker, maybe. And, uh, they said that we can't discuss it on this issue. But we've got all kinds of issues, personally, that you all talked to Thomas Billings for. And, uh, it needs to be, it needs to be worked out. We've got, we've got major problems.
So are the people in your organization paid?
We have two that are.
Two that are paid, how many are not paid?
There's two paid people and there's either five or six people that have the license.
The people that aren't getting the license, is it, is it that they can't afford to get the license or it's too much schooling or what's the issue?
There's a lot of schooling that goes with it. And they have to go through a process that is called National Register. There was a situation I know of, that actually an employee got released from Thomas Walker because he had 27 years of service in the EMS. He didn't pass the National Register test. He know that, he know you. He know danger. But if you can't pass the test, you get the, get the paper. He had no Tennessee.
So do you want us to get money, the same amounts to each department or do you want it to be based on the number of calls that they was calling to?
Well...
And is that the consensus, whatever his answer is, is that kind of the way everybody?
I, I think it has to be a certain level of safety net under all of this. Now, this year, one may need to be, the, 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 the big buy, you know? Now, this year, one may need to be, to be on the big buy, you know?
One thing, I think you do, if you don't mind for me to speak, I think that there's good rationale in basing it on the number of incidents that it responded to. With that said, I think you have to be very cautious and, and look at it from an overall standpoint, too. And I'm speaking from a fire department that doesn't have a huge number of calls every year. But that department that takes twenty-five calls needs to be just as ready to respond as a department that makes two-hundred-and-fifty calls. Because there's literally life and death that hangs in the balance. Now, you've got to be realistic and say, the priority has to be on that department that does the two-fifty, because, you know, there's going to be better effect for the money. But I, I just, I would put caution in there that you don't want to base it solely on that. What I would like to see happen is for each emergency services department to come up with a list of needs that they feel are most critical for their department, because each one is going to have different needs. And then evaluate those and see how they fit in this pool of money that we have, and if they will be applicable, you know? And then use it that way.
There's, there's a high fixed house that goes with the whole thing, you know, your insurance and vehicles and, you know, your basic house utility now. And then, you know, I mean, it stands for reasons, somebody is making hundreds of calls opposed to somebody making a hundred calls to have more house. So, you know, at some point, that does come a factor.
So, but I'm thinking that, that an agency that's making that many more calls, that is billing, or billing that many more calls should be able to fund themselves much better.
Well, okay.
Am I wrong in that?
You are wrong in that.
Well, certainly, certainly.
No comment, no comment, protocol.
That's correct. You know, I mean, more calls, but the number of calls that any agency is making will not fund twenty-four-seven purchases or employment of code. You follow what I'm saying? I mean, the rest of the column here, what's left of it is basically pretty short. It's going paid. And that's what it takes to contract an EMT to get on a truck. But the four-hundred calls that Thomas Walker will not pay, pay personnel if you want, you know, twenty-four-seven, they pick places for, for shift pay people.
Well, that wasn't what I was getting at, what I was getting at. It goes a long way in helping fund back some of the costs that...
It, it is a major shock, and, I mean, that's coming off the insurance chain.
Yes, that's what I was getting at. Not that it's going to refund trouble.
Yeah. It, it, but really, a lot of these agencies are living on what you're recovering. So, they just said, they just said, maybe the blood, the God, that's all you can do, you know?
What's your recovery rate?
Thank you for that, eighty percent.
How much did you say?
I'm having talks with junior today about these. But I think, I think Thomas Walker is recovering this over a hundred thousand dollars a year.
I don't know, I don't know what percent that'd be.
I think, I think each round eighty percent, pretty good.
Okay, let's, let's move on, let somebody else come up and, you know, we can continue some of these questions.
Can I say one thing? I was, I have errors. Last year, we lost two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents from insurance that, you know, we do get paid, but sometimes we don't. And for that one year, that's how much money we did not get. So, if we were getting all that money, we'd be fine, but we're not getting it. And I have it right here, if anybody wants to look at it.
Wow, aren't you good there?
Because sometimes they don't have insurance and we're taking them, sometimes you might get a hundred dollars, that type. You know, we get stuff like that all the time, and I'm sure everybody else does, too. But I have to show, you know, if we had that kind of money we were getting every year, we could fund ourselves, but we can't.
Is your a hard bill or a soft bill?
What's that?
A hard bill, you hard bill or soft bill?
It's soft bill. Okay, thank you.
My name's Larry Warner. I own Cuzzy Tobacco in Pennington, so you probably know why I'm here. Nationwide and statewide, politicians have found a class of people that they can abuse with taxes, and there's not enough to vote them out of office. But I believe you're going to find that that may not be the case in Lee County. Now, my understanding is that you're going to impose a two-dollar-and-fifty cent per carton additional tax on cigarettes for Lee County, which is an insult adding to the injury that the governor just gave us. Is that correct?
That was in the, that's, that was in the budget.
Okay. All right, now, Lee County smokers are not saying that they don't want to pay their fair share, but the emphasis is on fair, and that is not fair. I represent quite a few people that are very upset about this, and we're just getting organized. And at your next meeting, I'm going to present a compromise proposal. Like I said, we're willing to pay our fair share, but we're not going to be abused. And I think that we can put together enough people to stop the abuse. And Sidney, I'm really disappointed in you, buddy. You said vote for Sid, you'll be glad you did. Well, I voted for Sid, but now I'm not glad I did. And my gosh, Ben, it's Democrats that have never seen a tax they didn't like. What's happened to you? I understand that, that one person on the board, Mr. Smith, understands that what you all are about to do is kill the goose that lays the golden eggs. Now, we have already lost our Tennessee business. We had a lot of Tennessee customers that were coming over here because of what the governor did to us. If you all do this to us, we'll lose our Kentucky customers. So, you're not going to get as much money as you think. All you're going to do is hurt local businesses. Like I said, I know what you've done, and what's done can be undone, and I will present an alternate proposal for you to consider. We will pay our fair share, but we're not going to be abused. We've, we've set up with this. So, just one thing for you all to remember, there's more than one way to skin a cat, but there ain't no way the cat likes it. Thank you.
My name's Josh Flannery. I'm chief of the Driving and Fire Department, co-chairman of the Lee County Fire and Rescue Association. First off, I want to say, I want to thank you guys for what you all have done to help us with our radio project. Thank Nathan for the work he put in with us for years before he handed it out to Mr. Moser. That's taken us a long way as far as trying to catch up the thirty-year span that we're behind on, or as other counties go. As most of you've heard from most of the people that I'm associated with in Fire and Rescue, this county's in dire need of some help with our emergency services. We're, we're falling off the cliff, and we're hanging there by two fingers. Over the weekend, like they said, we had two ambulances available in the county. I had an ambulance given to me from the county above Richland. I purchased the other one out of Thomas Walker. Both of those trucks were damaged. Penny's had two trucks damaged. So, we're, we're doing everything we can to keep going, trying to help the people, these, our communities. It's expensive. Right now, to get one of my trucks back in going is going to cost me five thousand dollars. So far this year, I've accrued twenty-five thousand dollars of building money that we've put out. The other repair bills I had, had up to right at twenty thousand dollars. These trucks are expensive.
Now, the truck you're talking about is down, is it our truck?
It's Dan's.
And?
Dan's. Yes, sir. I refer to them as trucks.
But is it, now, you keeping up with the billing on it for?
Yes, sir.
It's not a problem?
What's that?
That's not a problem. I mean, that's, that's part of what we, we said, you know, as long as you keep, you know, you're, am I correct on it? And there, cares that funding that, if, like, if your vehicle is torn up, that's part of the cares that, the rescue unit?
If it's going to be qualified.
If it qualifies.
And the memo on that, I know a comment was made earlier that they hadn't received notification. I started that memo last week. I got clarification on what was, how the split was going to be on Fire and Rescue. And it's about half to two-thirds complete, but now trying to factor in the individual numbers for Rescue, Fire was equal, but Rescue was not. And listing some of the guidelines, the overreaching guidelines of the use of the funds, that's fortunate it's yet to be completed, but I hope it goes out tomorrow.
On behalf of everybody on the E and Fire EMS community, and on behalf of citizens that we protect, I ask, I urge everyone on this board to consider purchasing an ambulance for each EMS facility in this county, because we need it. That, that money was set aside for this specific purpose. And I hope that you guys can find the hearts to do that, because we're real close to failure here. And every little bit of help we can get can go along with it. I guess that's my time, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, you mind if we ask a question?
Go ahead, yeah, anytime you got a question.
As you may know, this money, if we're wrong about the guidelines and we give money to somebody, or we spend some money, and we're wrong about the guidelines, we have to pay the money back.
Yes, sir.
I know that the ambulance services can't pay the money back if we're wrong about buying ambulances or whatever the expenditure is. Do you have an opinion about what the general public's perception would be if we had to raise taxes to pay back all that money? As you've heard, some people don't like taxes even when you're one-point-seven million dollars short of bouncing the budget. So, do you have some opinion about what happens if we have to pay you that money back?
Well, I can guarantee you, we don't have to pay none of that money back, because all the counties around us have been purchasing ambulances. They've been purchasing, purchasing airbags, they're out here. It's all, it's all right there in that, in that criteria.
In fairness, though, none of them have been audited. Nobody's been audited yet, so we don't know. The guidance is pretty crummy from the government on what has to be paid back, and I think that may be, if Mr. Poe made a statement about that, it's because we don't have a lot of guidance on it. And I'm not saying that it can't be done. I'm not saying you don't need money. I know that. But what I'm saying is, is it the right thing to do? Do you think the public is prepared to pay back so many million dollars or have a tax increase sufficient to pay that money back? Do we borrow the money to pay it back? How do we pay it back if we're wrong about it?
I guess we'd have to figure out a way when we got there again.
Why do you buy forty if you want to use it? Well, I think we are going to use it.
Let's not have any comment, dog crowd, as we're called on.
Well, we're, if, if you guys could just come out and run, run a few calls in our shoes and see something like Steve was talking, some of the downfalls we have here. Twenty minutes to get dispatched to a call, man dies. It was given to a deputy, wasn't given to us. And we had, we had to face those people. When we don't have a truck, and our trucks broke down, the people in my community look at me and say, Josh, where, where are you guys at? Hey, man, the truck's broken down. We, we, we ain't got, we're working to get it fixed. Well, why did Thomas Walker come to drive and take us face? Truck's broke down, Penny's broke down.
As a citizen, are you willing to pay more tax to get the equipment that you need?
Yes, sir.
Because I, I agree with you, and I think you're speaking of the case that I've got now about a guy who died because of the slow turnaround on service, because so many people got dispatched and nobody could respond to the call. So, I'm aware of the issue, and I know that you all desperately need money.
And I tell you another, my mother laid the floor for an hour, because there was no one. There, there was some incumbents, and I said, I came right out and stayed in the dispatch office. Fifty minutes it took to realize that, hey, this bus didn't match the call. It's been resolved with, with the agency. It wasn't no father or agency, just one person. But fifty minutes it took. I came back from a call, I called her, I heard that call page out, talked to her, she said, I'll, I'll be just fine. I'll, I said, I'll give you call back about it in a little bit, see if it check on you. I called her back an hour later, and she's still on the floor wondering why she doesn't have it. And that's just downright disgraceful. So, like Steve said, we've got problems, we're going to try and work at them for a long time. Fails, and you get to get, get these problems fixed. Mr. Moser, you've been well aware of it. We need, we need to get opportunities to do something, okay?
I've got a question, Josh.
All right.
Do y'all take a lot of people out to urgent care?
We cannot transport to urgent care.
I came by there last night, and I don't know who ambulances they were, but there were three sitting there.
We, we cannot transport to urgent care, we, we can only pick patients up from urgent care to take to the hospital facility, because that's not a hospital facility, that's just an urgent care mandate section.
I'd, I'd never seen that one care. There were three sitting there, and I thought, oh, school.
SE trains are stationed there.
Yes, yes, SE.
They have an office in that section. I don't know, I mean, you'd have to get close enough to see riding on the ambulances, but they are, they do have an office, that's where they're based from now. So, you'll typically, you'll see one of their ambulance, at least one of theirs sitting out front there. And most times, they don't have it.
If you guys get called out, then who else? Do we use SE trains? I mean...
If they, if they make, if we get called out and we don't have a crew, most times it'll go to the next available agency. Most times, we don't have the next available agency, so that'll go to SE trains, or we rely on outside agencies from Wise County, sometimes Scott County. Has Steven had a call with Claymore Kelly and Millburn? Right, right, our main problem is, we have, we have EMTs, we have, we have the people most, most of the time, but our trucks are the main issue. I've worked my whole life trying to, last, last twenty years trying to make, make good at this. And we've given up a lot of our, our personal time, and we've not received one dime from anybody. We don't get paid for this. We do have a love of our heart for the people of the community that we serve. And that, that's why we're all here asking that, hey, guys, we need some help.
I appreciate what you guys do.
I'm Pat Brown from Thomas Walker Rescue, and I've been with Thomas Walker Rescue since it started in, I think that was that night, I can't remember. There's been times in my life where because of work, I couldn't spend as much time with these one-upmen now. But I have to address this, because Mr. Cole asked, you know, we keep asking, can we, would we be willing to pay taxes? Lee County has an opportunity for growth, particularly on the end of the county we live on. I think if we cannot provide opportunity, and we've talked with Larry about it before, and we've talked with Robert, if we can't provide fire and rescue to the county, you've thrown away the opportunity for growth.
My name's Anthony Robbins, I'm a concerned citizen, former volunteer with Pennington Rescue for over thirty-eight years. Sidney, to answer your question about the CARES Act, it clearly says in the act that the permitted use of funds may include expenditures incurred to address medical or public health needs, as well as respond to second-order effects of emergencies. So, I think it's pretty clear that that's, that's what the money's going to be used for. And Larry, to answer your question, SE trains, their primary goal and their primary mission is to transport people to the medical plans, dialysis, cancer treatments, that sort of thing, not so much emergency medical services, although they are available to help if needed. But their trucks are staffed for the other purpose. And Dane, if, if in fact you did say this county would never buy an ambulance, then I think you should attend your resignation, because you work for this county, it's not the other way around. So, we need to really look at what we're spending money on. We need to look at what the needs of this county are. And with the hospital being closed as long as it is, it amazes me that these guys have to stand up here and beg you all for funding. It makes no sense at all. None.
Money doesn't grow on trees, man.
It doesn't, but if we've got CARES Act funds that are here, we shouldn't be begging But if we've got CARES Act funds that are here, we shouldn't be begging for it. Simple as that.
There's other things that are important also in this county.
I wouldn't think that pews for the courthouse would be enough, but...
I don't think we're going to be buying any of those.
Well, I think we need to look at emergency medical services, put more priority on it than we ever have, especially now.
That's not the correct way to ask for something.
I'm not asking. I'm a concerned citizen, voice of my opinion.
I'm from St. Charles. And I talked to Mr. Leonard last Friday, and he said that concerning the cigarette tax, we just got our bill with all the other taxes that came out on it, and then he wanted to do that, and he said that you all had decided to do that. And he said that it had never been legal in the state of Virginia for the county to impose cigarette tax. But this someone contacted the governor's office, and now all at once you can do it. So, I just wanted to find out more about that, how that just comes about, if something is not ever done, and you say it didn't used to be legal, but now it is.
Well, it's not, I don't think it's a question of legal. I just think it's a thing that the state has, the state can do a lot of things that the county can't do when it comes to taxes. The state can impose a lot of things on citizens.
And it does.
The state imposes a lot of things, and they take those things back that the county has to keep paying. But they don't get refunded back from the state for it. And I think that, I guess in the grand scheme of things, that's why we're at 1.7 million dollars in debt from last year. You know, those things that we don't get paid, that the state used to fund, they don't fund a lot of those projects anymore. You know, I don't know how the easiest way to put it, but you know, the county still has to keep paying those bills that the state creates. And we have no way, I mean, other than, like I told you, you know, other than revenue, personal property, that type thing. And I told you, you know, I'm not a believer in some of those things because there's, you know, there's just so many people that, you know, that can't do it, but...
Well, that's true. But I mean, people of Lee County can only pay so much tax. I mean, that's all the money they have. And then y'all just want to keep it, more tax and more tax. We just got those tax bills, another ten-dollar wheel tax plus all the cars, and now you want to come up with the cigarette tax. And just couldn't understand how, you said they never could, the county never could tax cigarettes before, but now, once you call the governor's office, and you can.
No, I don't, we didn't call the governor's office. That's just, that just came out from the state.
It's passed through the House and the Senate in the state of Virginia. It's a bill that gives us the authority to tax cigarettes.
And my second question is about, and as we all know, there's a drug problem in Lee County, and we're all voting to bring in people and house them in St. Charles. I mean, what's going on with that?
There hasn't been any vote to bring them in.
And I think I may have tried, and I apologize if I didn't explain that, but we didn't vote on that. You know, I told you that was just a project that was brought in, that I told you that I openly opposed, and, you know, I have no problem with, openly opposed.
You told me you were the only one that did oppose it.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure that I'm the only one that opposes, but I openly oppose it. I mean, there might be others that oppose it but don't openly oppose it, but I openly oppose it.
Because we have enough drug problems in Lee County, and we have enough in St. Charles without bringing in more.
But I, you know, like I say, I don't know enough about that particular project, really. And, you know, I don't, I don't want to... City, would you like to address that? You probably know more about it than me, but...
There's no plan to bring in people from Ohio. There was a guy here last week who said, "Heard you're bringing in people from Ohio." Somebody posted something on the internet about Indiana. There's no plan to recruit people from the eastern part of the United States to come in. And we hope to deal with mostly Lee County people. This isn't a board initiative. This is something that I'm a part of for some people who've been trying to do something about the drug issue. It's not a methadone clinic. It's not a Suboxone clinic, although there is one two hundred yards away that nobody seems to have a problem with, in Stone Mountain. So, we hope to help Lee County people. It's one of those things, everybody wants a solution to the problem, but everybody says, "Well, not in my backyard." So, if you can't put it in St. Charles, where can it go? Jonesville, Pennington? Somewhere, we need a treatment facility. And we've done very little to nothing to do something about the drug issue for the last, I've been practicing all now for, I mean, my eleventh year. We have nowhere to even send people to get help. I mean, it's terrible to try to get people help. So, we've got an opportunity to do something in Lee County, and I'm a fan of doing it. I mean, nobody wants it in their backyard, but I think if people will learn a little bit about what's been done, they'll find that it's not some out-of-staters that are coming in here.
Well, see, that, I mean, that's what was, that was the story, that it was going to be people brought in that were being released from prison, brought in and housed in St. Charles.
It may be some people that come out of prison. That may be true. May be people that go through a detox. We don't want people who are detoxing. We want people that have detoxed to then come in and have a home environment, eight people. It's not a plan to take people from out of state.
Yeah, because, I mean, you worry too. There's absolutely nothing in St. Charles. What are they going to do? Just sit there in that church building and...
There's a detailed plan. I would encourage you to talk to Jack Raisad or Pastor Osteen from First Baptist Church. They're both on the board. I've helped with it, but I'm not on the board. So, I would encourage you to talk to them. Jack will probably meet you, Pastor Osteen, and kind of go over what the plan is more detailed on.
Okay. Thank you.
Would the chairman mind if we responded to some of the things? I don't want everybody to clear out before we talk about some of these issues.
No, I don't have a problem.
My name's Jerry Caldwell. I'm from St. Charles, Virginia. I didn't know the county was 1.7 million in debt. Do we still have industrial development director? We don't have?
Not at this, not at this moment. We don't have anyone hired.
Well, I've been here about forty years in this county, and I can only remember two businesses that have come here industrialized. Is anything being done to recruit businesses? Anything at all to create revenue? Or we're just saying the people will take care of it?
We had a recruiting meeting this week where we interviewed some people to hire for the economic development director. And of those people, there was nobody that we interviewed that we felt would be of any value to the county. We didn't want to hire somebody and pay them forty, fifty thousand dollars and not do anything at all to value, of value for the county.
Yeah, that was the problem for it.
Yeah, yeah. But we're still, we're still looking, and we will continue to look until we find somebody who can do something for the county.
I mean, just, I mean, look, y'all put out any advertising that we need to...
We have, we have outside agencies.
I mean, so much should be constantly calling somebody or contacting other companies to bring their name to this county. We have industrial park over there, it's been over here for what, thirty years?
A long time.
It's ridiculous. I mean, we're just, we've never, look at Harlan County, Wise County, all these other counties around us. It's like we're the dead zone. We need to have a future here. Thank you.
We have several different agencies from the state, EVA, from DCDA, and other outside agencies that are recruiting for us and communicating with us to get something here. You know, everybody wants businesses here, but because of their geographical location, not having interstate, it is a hard thing to do.
Yeah, that has lots to do with it.
You can't beg somebody to come here. They got to want to come here.
That's five years ago. You know, we should have taken care of that mountain over there, made a proper highway.
I mean, you got to have interstate. That's where businesses want to be located. You got to either have rail service or interstate. That's what they want. And broadband. We don't have broadband. And, you know, these businesses, that's one of the first things that, you know, they've got to have broadband. Those are the things that we're trying to work on now. Those are issues that we're working on. And to Larry's point, you know, there's other agencies that work. You got Lenoisco. I mean, there's all kinds of agencies that are working. You know, we're just not sitting here like lame ducks, you know, just waiting on somebody to call us. I mean, we work with Scott County. We work with Dixon County. We work with North City and North Wise County. Anytime something comes in now, we work as a region now. So, anytime something comes in one of those areas, we are now, we all get, we're, we all benefit from. So, like the way it used to be where somebody lands a business in one of those counties, you know, they get all the revenue. It's divided up between counties now, so it's not revenue sharing. It's revenue sharing now.
They better share some revenue, some other revenue.
And that's, that's the way it is now because that's, you know, it's how it had to go to, for small counties like ours that couldn't get any money. A lot of people don't see that thing, but you know, and, yes, like I say, you know, enough people to, you know, like tonight, if we hadn't as many people come to a board meeting every week, you know, you could get a lot more participation, a lot more people would be well more aware of how money gets spent, where the money needs to go, maybe help point direction in other, you know, other directions. There's a hard, there's a lot of hard decisions made up here, you know. You just got to go on your heart most of the time on what you think, you know, what your heart tells you is the best. You know, there are hard decisions that's made. They're not made because we just like to make decisions.
I just think some progress needs to be made for this county.
Well, you're not alone. I'm here.
I mean, we're held hostage by a landline telephone where we live. No cell phone tower in St. Charles area. You know, it's just kind of backwards also. Thank you.
And if I misstated that we were 1.7 million dollars in debt, it's that we had a deficit. We passed a budget to spend 1.7 million more than we took in, not that we're in debt with that much money.
That's kind of the same thing.
Yeah, it's better.
Thank you.
Can I speak again? You know, as, as y'all look at how dispersed it's been, you know, we're agent in, we're calling for it. But everybody, and I think City is making the point correctly, you know, it has to be spent wisely. That's what your own job always is, figure out how to spend this wisely. And, you know, on tax rate, everybody's, nobody likes tax rates. You set your own tax rate. Everybody gets a little buzzed when they get your tax tickets. But the thing that is the best is how well you spend it. And people need to recognize it.
I think, as you well know, and most of you in fire and rescue well know, we spent well over a million dollars to help you guys out, and I think that was money well spent.
It was. And as you all...
I don't think that, the general idea that's been made tonight is that we don't really try to help the fire and rescue, but we really went above and beyond to take that first step with you all. And I, you know, maybe you all don't want to make that statement, but I'll go ahead and make it for us. We went well above and beyond to help you guys out already, you know. And we made that first step. We just need to keep going. It's not a fact that we stopped.
Sometimes I get myself sort of spitting a little far, but I hope that everybody recognizes that we do appreciate that and that it took a lot of step on your own part, a lot of faith in to do what you do. And as you all decided stuff, we, you know, we did. I'd sit down with you, hammer it out, if that's what you all feel good about. I mean, we've got, have come to closure somehow.
I think, I think that I'm speaking for all of us when I say that we want to spend as much money as we possibly can on you all. And in spending as legally as we can, I don't think we want to come back and buy the county in the, but...
Right.
Right?
Can I speak for this to all of you, please? I know this is out of order terribly, but I just hope, I hear, I hear an underlying current that there's a fear to spend this money because it may come back. And that's very, and I see you all taking our best interest at heart to say that. But please don't let this money get away from Lee County because of that. Talk with your counterparts in other counties. There are people all over the state of Virginia that are using this money. They ran it through their county attorneys. They reviewed what they're doing, and they feel very confident that what they're doing is well within the guidelines of the law. And so, that's, that's the biggest reason I'm here. For heaven's sake, don't let a pool of money this large get away from us when we need it so desperately. And I will say, Mr. Leonard, to your point, we appreciate tremendously what was done with the, with the radio system and the amount of resources that were expended there. With that said, Lee County falls far, far behind anybody else practically in the state and certainly all of our neighboring counties in what's allocated to each EMS agency every year. Ten thousand dollar allocation. It's barely half of what even your neighboring counties are doing. And that amount has not changed in years. And I'll tell you, at Steelyville, we have a very small fire department. My insurance bill is probably tiny compared to Dryden or some other agencies with more vehicles and a bigger building. But when I pay my insurance and I pay my electric bill and utilities, that ten thousand dollars is gone. So, anything else we spend, we have to come up with. So, that, to that point, but again, I think we're here because we just don't want to see the county lose its money. And I still sense some apprehension from you guys that, you know, it may be something we end up having to pay back. But I think if we're smart, and we got a lot of smart people in this room, I think we'd figure out how to spend it. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
I want to make it clear, and I'll make this promise, that I will not vote to give any of that money back. We've got it in our pocket now, and I will spend it. And I'm...
of that money back, we've got it in our pocket now, and I won't spend it, and I'm a gambler by nature, if we have to pay the money back, we just have to pay it back, I'd like to give a big chunk of it to EMT, really what I wanted to know, and, and I guess I was asking a question, but really what I was saying is, if we spend, I guess y'all proposed and spent, somebody said, I think a quarter of a million per, per service, so if we spend a million and a half, and we're wrong about it, and, and I don't think you all are wrong about it, and, and Mr. Robbins made a point about these regulations, we got some regulations June 30th, and I've got my notes here from when I read it, it, it suggested, I said we may be able to give money to ambulance services, so I've been thinking for months that we could give money, I, I'm willing to give it, that will be my vote, to give it, if we have to pay it back, we'll just have to raise taxes a little bit to get it done, to pay it back. On the issue of taxation in general, we're broke, we're completely broke, we've spent more money than we took in for the last five years, the cost of healthcare, as most of you know, has skyrocketed, our jail costs have, I'm trying to think what the jail, we have 48% more people in the jail than we had in 2010, which is totally jack the price of, of the jail, the cost had went through the roof. So when we started this budget cycle back in probably May, I proposed that we take the budget, we go through each line item, which we did, we had probably six or eight meetings, we went through the budget with a fine tooth cutting. For those of you who know me, I'm pretty frugal, and we cut a fair amount, not as much as I would like to, but we cut, and after we got done cutting, we said, what do we have to raise taxes to make the balance, the budget balance? Somebody made the point about me not seeing a tax I didn't like, or something to that effect, you know, I, I'm a Republican, I'm a fiscal conservative, and when I was starting to, to like politics back in the Bob Dole days, it was a Republican mantra to always balance the budget, and I said in the beginning, and these guys can back me up, I will not vote for a budget that's not balanced, and I did not vote for the budget, and I'll vote to not pay the bills as normal because they're part of that budget here in a minute, but, so when you look at what we could do, we went through the budget, as a group, decided what we were willing to cut, I would've cut more than we cut, but we, we cut what we cut, we ended up with a certain amount of expenditures, I said we need to raise taxes enough to meet, to make it balance, that's just what you do, that's what you all do at home, that's what I do, that's the reasonable thing to do. So I proposed that we raise real estate taxes, which hit most people, there wasn't enough votes to raise real estate taxes, our taxes are significantly lower than any county that's our contemporary besides Grunde, they have one lower than us, but most of the counties in southwest Virginia have a higher tax rate than us. We can't have a sales tax, the county cannot have a sales tax, the law doesn't allow it, I'd like to do it, it's the most fair thing, it can't be done, so this year, the legislature allowed us to do a prepared meals, a fast food tax, if you will, we voted to do that to raise some money, and the other one they allowed us to do was a cigarette tax, I think I proposed a nickel, there was a, a request to raise it to a quarter, so we raised, we put a tax on cigarettes, those are really the only two options we have, we've got personal property, we've got real estate, our personal property is already too high, in my opinion, it's higher than the other counties around us, so we didn't vote to raise personal property, I wanted to raise real estate taxes, there wasn't enough votes to do that, the wheel tax is something, you know, everybody says make it fair, make it hit everybody, well, most people have a car, so we raised the wheel tax, I want to say it was about eight or 10 dollars on the car, I mean, it's nothing that's gonna break most people, other than that, there's nothing else that we can tax, so we went through and cut the budget as much as we could, we raised taxes on things that we could agree on, there wasn't enough to raise them as much as I wanted, but I would much rather, you know, when you think about, do people want to live in Lee County, and what, what, how do we measure quality of life for citizens? One way we measure it is when you, when you call 911, does anybody show up or not? If we were in Roanoke or Abington or Richmond, those are things that most people expect. I would prefer to raise taxes and have, you know, ambulances that don't have 300,000 miles, if I get hurt in a farming accident, I want somebody to show up quickly, so that's my position, I'll vote to spend the money on EMT, not all four million dollars, but I'll vote to spend a significant sum on it, if we had to pay it back, we had to raise taxes, I'm okay with that, I hope you all are too, if you are okay with that, and you're serious about really wanting us to spend this money, then I hope that y'all will back us up, if we do take that chance, I hope that y'all will get out there and say, well, you know, they had to pay that money back, or they gave us what we needed, so don't complain about an extra nickel on real estate taxes.
Never seen nobody complaining when they're down in the back of the truck.
That's right.
Yeah, but you keep saying raise taxes, you know, when my girl started high school, Lee County had a, Lee High had a 1,500 students almost, now how many do they have? 600, right?
Six.
That all goes back to the people leaving the county. People keep leaving, I mean, 1.7 million dollars to pay back, how many, what's the population of the county now, as far as taxpayers go?
Oh, I, I don't know the answer to that, 24,000 people.
Taxpayers of, not nearly that many.
It really depends on which tax you're talking about, real estate tax pay.
Any tax, any real estate. How many people pay real estate?
We have conversations back and forth across, but I, I'll say this, one of our biggest costs is that, one of the things that hits us the hardest is this regional jail thing, I can say that, if we can keep these people out of jail, keep them out of trouble, that saves us a ton of money.
Yep, I'm just saying the population of the county.
We can't, we can't have conversations back and forth. Anybody else have any more supervision, you got, y'all got any more questions?
If you only have 1,000 taxpayers in the county, what's your problem with that? Working people. Well, I mean, what's the plan to pay back the 1.7 million dollars?
It's not been bargained, it was taken out of general.
Well, what's the plan to keep breaking even? That goes back to my point, there has to be.
You'd have to raise real estate taxes.
Right, there's not enough people to do.
Karen, no more public expression, we'll, we'll close it and move on to the approval of minutes, the August 17, 2020 recess meeting, August 18, 2020 recess meeting, and September 8, 2020 recess meeting.
Is that August 18 maybe a bit too regular, maybe instead of recess?
Motion to approve. Okay, got a motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay, next we got Payroll County Administrative Department, payroll, warrants having issues, and approval of dispersal. I'll be paid for. Paid the bill, got a second.
Second.
And a second, all in favor? Any vote?
They didn't stick their own seat.
Okay, next we got delegations, got anglic化的, county extension office, produce office, planning grant.
So you all got this in your board packet, and soon you all looked at and basically know what I'm doing, so basically I will, you know, you all discussed a lot this evening and all ready, and this is one of the less contentious things for the evening. I would like to ask for a letter of support from the board supervisors, my plan is, and the EDA has indicated that they are interested in being the grantee of this planning grant, but I would like a board, a, a letter of support from the board, basically saying you all are interested in this project, this would be a good project for the county. As far as me working on it, I did talk to the tobacco commission, I am putting, and my goal is to put in tobacco commission grants for the match, so it's a grant from VDEX, Department of Agriculture, and then asking for a match from the tobacco commission, who have indicated this would be a good project, need to put it in, I have to put it in on October 8th. So I'm going to the next EDA meeting, go ahead and get the approvals from them to make sure that we can apply, and in the meantime, I'll be putting together that proposal and actually have that hopefully done for their packets, so they can look at what I plan on putting in, and if they want to put in, they need to come in, so that's all I have this evening.
Okay, you guys got any questions?
So you want a letter saying that we support the planning grant?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second to, all in favor?
All righty, any other questions for me? Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'll get out of here all fair.
Okay, next we got financial, quarterly appropriations.
Karen, you had a resolution there for one fourth of 1.5% of the annual budget for Head Start Social Services and the School System, Resolution 20 dash 013.
I think I approved the resolution, appropriation resolution 20 dash 013. Okay, got a motion to approve Resolution 20 dash 013. Got a second?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay, next we got supplemental appropriations.
Karen, you have a total of three supplemental appropriations requested, the first one is reimbursements received in the treasurer's office, they had scheduled a class for one of the employees, but because of the COVID-19 pandemic, it was canceled, also in the emergency services, that is the grant that the board approved last month, well, I think it was actually approved in one of the EMS meetings, that's for the laptops for the ambulances, and then under solid waste management expenses, we had costs for the fencing and some things like that, and the dumpster lids that came in after June 30th, they were expected to be, the goal was to have them all expended by June 30th, but they were not, so some of those purchases were made this year, so it's going around a short current budget.
Okay, got a motion on that, go move it, Karen. Okay, got a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay, next we got a new business, got a board appointment, some more zoning appeals, and I apologize, but I still haven't got a chance to talk with that one, if it'll be okay with the board if we table that until next month. Okay, you got a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, Heart of Appalachia, got two appointments there.
We all make a motion, we reappoint Karen Meyer.
Second. Okay, got a motion to reappoint Karen Meyer, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Motion to table, who you? Okay, a motion and a second to table the other one, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote?
That second, when, I'll, I'll double check the code on that, it's technically not an appointment, it falls to whoever the tourism director is.
Okay.
For each county, so I think that will be an all in mag.
Okay.
That's a lot whenever someone's tired.
Okay. All right. Okay, and next one is Tourism Committee, and I apologize for that one too, I haven't had a chance to talk with Harold, so if it's okay with y'all, I'd like to make a motion to table that until next month. Second.
Has there been a Tourism Committee meeting?
How long, a year or two?
I'd have to go back and see when the last one was, I'm not sure.
Okay, got a motion and a second to table that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay, next we got Redevelopment Housing Authority, District 1.
I make that motion to reappoint Junetta Peabody to the Redevelopment Housing Authority.
Second. Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay. Okay, next on the list is the E911 Training Grant.
Wait, 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 your package, Precept Planator is seeking to obtain a training grant for emergency medical dispatch, he's applying for 100% grant funding, typically most of the training grants are, but with the, the request that was made a few months ago for the 100%, and it was reduced by the state, he just wanted to make sure the board was aware of the grant being suspended.
What's the number on the grant?
He didn't put that in his, I mean, put that into your, but, but if, if they awarded it some other rate, regardless if it's awarded, it'll be up to you to determine whether you want to accept the grant or not.
I make a motion to approve moving forward. Okay, we got a motion to move forward with the 500 grant, I've got a second?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay, next we got Department of Criminal Justice Services grant.
We received notification from DCJS that the grant application in the amount of $49,415 had been approved by the state, this was intended to support a broad range of activities to prevent, prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus, we intend to use these proceeds to pay for a contract security guard at the front entrance to the building, and purchase some mask sanitizing supplies, things of that nature for that purpose.
We need to vote on that?
Typically, we do have a vote to accept the grant.
Motion to accept. Okay, got a motion, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay, next we got Regional Library Request for CARE Act Funding.
The Australian Regional Library is requesting the board consider providing a small amount of the county's CARE Act funding to reimburse their costs for medications and sanitization by both Pinnacle Gap and Rose Hill Libraries in order for them to reopen and provide services to the public during the pandemic, I did include their spreadsheet, I didn't include all of the invoices, there was a stack about an inch thick, and she had a, I thought they had a very detailed spreadsheet showing those expenses, they have them broken down by every vendor, each stated purpose for it, and the total amount, total for both facilities was just a little over $3,000, $3,020.49.
What'd you say, 3,000 and what?
$3,020.49.
I like that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is temporary closure of Route 682.
The Virginia Department of Transportation is requesting board supervisors' approval for temporary closure of a very small portion of Route 682, this is Giles Hall Road, to allow for the replacement of a bridge, the road section in question is between the intersections of Route 851 and 68.
of Route 851 and 680. Existing bridge is one lane and is currently posted at an eighth ton restricted load. So, and that may turn out very well, but when you pull that up, that's, that's not even a tenth of a mile of the road that's being closed. You basically got, uh, two secondary roads. They're not necessarily parallel, but they do line their way back out of there. So, uh, there's only, I think there's only one structure on this portion that's being closed, and it won't affect it. Uh, they'll, they'll have access to their driveway. They'll, it's just that some of the traffic will have to take a different route out and come out either further east or further west on 58th than what they're, what's normal for them to do. And it will just be a temporary closure until the bridge is set. Most cases like that, they carry them out and they have pre-manufactured bridges that they set back in place. I'm not sure if that is the, the plan on that, but I expect it will be.
Then you done our, Robert?
Yeah, I make that a motion.
You go do that then. Get a new bridge, don't you?
Yeah.
I've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next we got, uh, E911 Sign Maintenance Area.
Our agreement for 911 street sign maintenance will expire at the end of this month. Signs and designs of Wise, Virginia have been performing this work for the past four years. Mind all of us, they have done a good job. They're willing to continue their agreement at no increase in pricing for an additional two-year period. The contract we had previously, and what we recommend is a two-year contract with the option to renew it for an additional two years, subject to the approval of both parties.
Do you recommend that we accept that?
Yes.
I make that motion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, can you pick a quick recess?
Yeah, let's take, uh, y'all have problems, take a five-minute recess. Okay, we're, we're, we're back in order. Okay, now we got motions made and a second.
I make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to 2.2 dash 3711 Sunday, so to discuss personnel.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?